That's a, uh.
Library?
Um, yeah. I bet it never ever about worn out.
When I was a kid, I found one of them for that.
We can call this eighty quarters. Tuesday, June the tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Commissioner's courtroom, one sixty-two West Hurst Street, Trinity County, Portale, Broden, Texas. Patrick, Peter Brown. Prayer.
Let us pray. My gracious Father, have we just come to you today to say thank you. Bless us once again to make the wake up call. You're just another chance to do your bidding. For I believe you just say with this actual blessings upon us. Lead, guide, and direct us in our thoughts, our words, and our deeds. Lord, we ask your blessing upon this nation who so desperately need you to lead, God, and direct the ones who are believing in this country that they might do according to your will. In our states, our cities, our towns across the country. Lord, bless all the administrators in our school system and all those who have to do with our protection, our emergency workers, lead with them. Lord, even me, uh, with our courts. And even as commissioners, we'll lead and guide those who are leading and directing in that right choices will be made, that everything will be done fairly and equitably, that maybe will be helped in benefit. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity you give us all to serve. As we serve, Lord, bless us to give the Lord your due, Lord, for the guidance that we need, that we might help as many as we can while we can, all through the glory on and praise of Jesus.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You come for approval minutes, for May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Your Honor, I read through them. I didn't find any discrepancies. So move this adoption.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, discussing action on approval proclamations for June nineteenth, Juneteenth Day to Trinity County.
Trinity County declares Juneteenth as a recognized holiday. Whereas Trinity County recognizes the importance of honoring and celebrating the rich history, culture, and contributions of African Americans to our nation and our community. And whereas Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day or Freedom Day, commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African Americans in the United States. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of slavery. Effectively ensuring that the Emancipation Proclamation, signed by President Abraham Lincoln, was enforced in the deepest corners of our nation. And whereas Juneteenth represents a significant milestone in our nation's history, symbolizing freedom, resilience, and the ongoing struggle for racial equality. And whereas Trinity County acknowledges the importance of promoting inclusivity, equality, and justice for all its residents, irrespective of their race, ethnicity, or background. And whereas recognizing and commemorating Juneteenth would provide an opportunity for our community to reflect upon our shared history, engage in meaningful dialogue, and work together to promote unity and understanding. And whereas by officially recognizing Juneteenth as a recognized holiday, Trinity County demonstrates its commitment to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, fostering an atmosphere of respect and celebrating the achievement and contributions of African Americans. And now therefore Judge Danny Martin, on behalf of Trinity County, does hereby proclaim and declare that Juneteenth shall be officially recognized as a holiday in Trinity County. Trinity County encourages its residents to commemorate and celebrate Juneteenth by engaging in educational activities, cultural events, and community events that promote unity, diversity, and understanding. Trinity County encourages businesses, organizations, and institutions within its jurisdiction to observe, uh, to observe Juneteenth and provide opportunities for employees to learn about and celebrate this important day. Trinity County calls upon the community leaders, educators, and residents to foster an environment that promotes inclusivity, understanding, and social justice.
Joe, like to come up and take pictures.
It's on move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, come on down. Come on, Lord, come here. You better wrap it, bag.
Only, only if I get all my cousins right here to come up with it.
You don't know if you're a baby. For a while.
The tweezers.
Thank you, sir. Bless y'all. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Number six, discussing act of proclamation declaring the month of June as elderly abuse prevention month in Trinity County. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. Whereas as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. Whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a common concern affecting thousands of people across Texas. Whereas whereas there were a hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-two reports of abuse older adults and people with disabilities in two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma and embarrassment and fear. And whereas adults, abuse affects men, women of all income, ability levels, and cultural and ethnic backgrounds in all communities. Whereas elderly abuse is everyone's business. It's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elderly abuse. Now therefore, I Danny Martin, Trinity County Judge, is recognizing thereof, do hereby proclaim the month of June two thousand twenty-five to be elderly abuse awareness. So move.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You watch, please.
I just wanted to say, um, Judge Martin, I appreciate, um, you making June elderly prevention month.
You, you took them out there so they can, they can hear you. How are you doing?
Can you hear me? I'm good. How are you?
This is Miss Martin.
So, my name is Charlie Martin. I'm with the Elder Services. I cover, uh, Trinity County as well as Houston County. And I know that you guys did make the stats this year, but we, I did hook them up. And for Trinity County for two thousand twenty-four, there were a hundred and eleven investigations completed. There was eighty-two that was validated. And just to give an ideal, because I do cover Houston County, Houston County, there was ninety-six investigations completed. There were seventy-seven validated. So, just want to make everyone aware and to remember that it takes the community to be able to assist the elderly and disabled, um, to prevent the abuse, um, to report the abuse. So, I appreciate each and every one of you. Um, I appreciate, uh, law enforcement. I have a great group of individuals here that, that helped me out a lot. So, very appreciated.
Miss Martin. Trinity County had more than Houston County.
For twenty.
According to the.
For two thousand twenty-four, there was, yeah, there was a hundred and eleven and completed investigations. There was ninety-six. So, yeah, I have a little bit of.
That's fair. Well, we appreciate you there.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you, Lord.
Come on.
Yes, yes, I want to break more.
You don't want to hear that, right? You like.
I'm rolling, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for what you do.
Number eight, discussion. Discuss the act of approval for personal action on, on, on.
Good morning. Word, Harry, all this lovely day. Here it is.
So great.
For world?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion for approval.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that written?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
No, we should look for.
Number nine, discussing that. On T A C, helping with.
Yes, sir. As you see there, you'll notice that the costs every year are going up, um, slightly.
Eighty dollars, you said?
Yes, sir. A little over eighty dollars, um, this year for the employee. What's the cost of the cost of the county?
Look, almost twelve hundred dollars a month.
For insurance, right? Yes, sir.
Eleven ninety-eight seventy-six. Eighty dollars.
That's me, man. That's my family. I go by the split stuff box.
Oh, man. Well, this is the tax, right?
Right. It is the tax.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, folks.
Number ten. Discuss the act approval of complete check.
Uh, you have the, um, the complete check registry here. I get, this is for the month of May, grant total over a million dollars.
I saw that project.
That's large, but there were three payroll degrees in that month. Just, that's why I put that down there. So, that's part of the increase. Uh, vendor total, just quickly, we're, hey, that's for our vendors, seven hundred and eighty thousand. So, a lot of money, a lot of expenses for the month of May. And that's, you know, for one month, that's, I had to double check it because I'm like, oh, I'm in one.
That's a beautiful number.
Yeah.
Very good. That's a major increase.
Now, there was some, obviously it's grant related, so there's money in and out, uh, but not, not a lot. Most of it was.
Bonnie, have we got any more money? Are that fifty? Have we got any more money on three month?
Not yet. We're waiting for one and, um, they have three down theme. And so they're lumping all of the remainder projects into three groups. And they just sent me this morning one set for me to look at and approve for some of them. So, I'm in the process of proving that assembly to our, uh, our person that we dealt with for the last year. She was not brought back after her complete rotation. So, we had to start.
We waited, we had the problem. Well, didn't that count that?
But with its moving, so that's a good thing.
Since they're lumping it together, it'll all come in quicker. And we look at the list.
Will need you separate.
Yes, I just want to make sure I have the detail.
Don't get it mixed up.
No.
It's about ninety percent and the bird's through ten before we get there.
We talked about that this morning and we will go through it and double check and send you all the lists just to make sure. Do you have any questions on any of the ones that you might have seen posted?
Make a motion to approve. Bonnie, I know the budget on, on the fares this year in line, but, I mean, I, I know it's going to be expensive, but gotta have the equivalent.
And where you will find, uh, those that have used ARPA money for some of your road bridge materials, that's in another, that's, you'll, you may see that, uh, in a different fund. You will see it for different fund. It will be toward the back. It'll be on page, like, twenty-four. And you'll see road bridge one, and I think road bridge four had some checks that went out that were charged, uh, ARPA, your, or your ARPA funds.
Hello, machine. I saw it there coming out. Did you get that second invoice I sent very buckets at all?
I'm not sure. I haven't seen anything yet, but.
I think Brady Robchard was seated up, so it's like fifty-four hundred dollars.
I, I won't see it until, as they hit, until approved.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Brady.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's, uh, I guess road bridge one or there for the road material and all that. This, this is ARPA, you said?
That is ARPA. That thirty-eight ten, that number?
Yes.
It says non-departmental. It's ARPA.
Gotcha.
And your six, six eleven, so road bridge one, have the code on that one. And si, oh, six fourteen, that's four, so that's road bridge four. And those are the invoices that we paid during the month of May.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bonnie. Since we lost the variance of the jail, do we still have the jailers over there?
As far as I know, I haven't seen any personnel action forms come through.
Uh, so, yeah, when you have one judge, you just bring the one jailer, uh, illegal, but, uh.
Okay, when we got the variance, we hired four jailers. If we don't have the variance, we don't need the four jailers. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Did ever, were they ever able to hire enough jailers?
We had to have four to bring it up to the fifteen. And now we're back down to the seven. Is that right?
Seven, right.
Well, what, what are you saying though? Did they ever actually hire four or did they get three or? They had to, to have enough to cut.
I don't know if they were dispatch or jailers combined, or if they were jailers. That's something we.
They were supposed to have, but, you know, I think sometimes it's difficult to get all the people they need at the same time. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We can, you know, look at the number of head counts whenever you want to.
Yes, I'd like to. I'd like to know what thirty hits. Million dollars.
You make most. I'll say.
All in the bag?
Aye.
Bonnie, any, anytime we go somewhere and buy something from a, a different vendor, we just have to call you?
Yeah, we need to make sure, because they need it. We need it from them and they need it from us, so that we can.
Well, once they're done, then they're.
Once they're in our system, we're good.
Okay. And those sheets that we have in texture? I want to ask you about that.
Just one quick question.
Did you check my mail as possible, holding, uh? I did show thirteen thousand seven twenty-six twenty-four.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember getting that.
Get that much.
Make sure I didn't pay it for three.
Yeah.
You're not.
Yes, I'll have.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. So, all in favor? Wow. Discuss an act approval, claim, invoices, the rest are related.
Uh, these were for invoices just during the week of May twenty-sixth through June the sixth. Like colars, road material, and some, uh, fuel. Or oil. That was death. Yeah, it was for death.
Do we sort of, oh, let's have one question.
Lawyer.
Do we do this up until the time we get the final payment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna keep these just as backup.
I mean, most, all, all of this stuff is going towards a.
Right, but should they come back and, uh, well, we want proof that you actually used the money to buy new material, then we're going to have it all scanned in, ready, these. So, it's easily.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Employee.
Number twelve.
Received capital asset report from May thirty-third to two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, appreciation asset was?
Yeah.
Uh, it's not accurate, first of all.
So, I have some questions.
Yes, before you ask questions, it's not clean. But I was, I was aware of that. We have transferred, well, attempted to transfer all over to the new software. They have a module for inventory. But they transferred everything, even those things that have been disposed of. So, we did have quite enough time to go through this. This is supposed to be for capital assets, anything five thousand dollars and over, or a group of items that would total that. So, if you see something on there, I know there's some trailers, there's some other ones that questioned off, mark them for me and send them to me so we can get them off of this list. Uh, so we can clean that up. We're, the new F I software has even more columns and more information, but I asked them to only transfer active assets. I don't need all of the ones we've already disposed of.
My, my question is where, I don't know, you mentioned a lot of, but I think, so I'm the new commissioner. This is the very top, the landfill sites, both landfill sites?
Yep.
Where does that work?
Well, we've got one out of precinct four landfill. Is there another one precinct two area or something?
It's there by the super plant.
Is there a plant over here? They've been around since nineteen, well.
And that's, and that's county property?
Where his boss is at.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Every precinct in the county had one at one time.
Every time I dig, I try to dig up an old pond or something. Um, another question. On the, uh, it's on the very right, it says, you know, like, let's say R B one for May, or, I guess G E N would be general.
General.
Or is, what is P U B?
Public, Public Safety Chair, uh, J P's, uh, not J P's, but, uh, constables. And then you, your, should, that should be, you might see judicial, J U D. Those are election judicial records.
Um, I looked through mine.
Okay.
Only thing to make ticket is the ninth ticket. That's the do of, I've got, obviously, nine times, not remember.
See. Oh, on that page four, I, I looked at all of mine, but on page four, about two thousand seventeen, it's a Texas utility trailer. I believe that's your field. I don't have that.
Twenty seventeen?
It's a twenty seventeen. Fifty-five hundred.
Says back in June of twenty twenty-one.
That's, that's one, huh? So, about twenty twenty-one?
That's what it's purchased, but it was a twenty seventeen trailer. We can go check that.
There wasn't one of those that you, uh?
That you got to go with a piece of equipment?
I thought U T, I thought that was a utility trailer. If it's a sixteen, that might be the one I. If it's a sixteen, it might be the one I pulled up.
Doesn't UT utility?
Yeah.
UT utility trailer?
But I thought it was a small trailer. I didn't.
I don't think that's mine.
Yes, sir. That's what we have in here.
But we're going to go back over all of this, right?
Yes, we're still working on that.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of things that's
Put on.
Not on here, and there's some things that needs to be on here.
So, if nothing uses as a working copy to let me know if anything that should not be on there. And then I have, um, places working on looking at any of the new equipment that we would purchase in twenty-four twenty-five, make sure that all of those are added. So, all the new election equipment is on there? And the old came off, purchased out.
Neil, this attorney trailer, that's my, my trailer that's twenty fifteen. The one you're talking about is probably the one that Danny gave us.
Remember, we had one. I actually saw. What page is that on?
Page five. Right at the top, attorney trailer, I think that's.
I like that.
So, what should you charge us for?
I think the charge, you'd want to be three thousand.
That trailer never worked three thousand.
One of them got it, I don't know.
No, but you see my attorney.
It's, it's, it's a general credit. It's that small that we had here. Steven got the small one. I got the big one.
Okay.
That, would that be?
More than a.
Paying for it.
Yeah.
We didn't actually, did we take it out of your budget?
I thought it was for free.
It's just a transfer.
It was just a transfer. He's just messing with somebody.
We didn't move any money.
He's messy.
As long as it's in the right precinct, that's all we get. Yeah.
It's just information.
Yes, it's just for your information, no, no action. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
You're welcome.
They did. There's a guy over at Trinity that is painting trailers. I fixed him to have one or two. None, I've done had some of my personal trailers done. He does a great job. He's using that epoxy paint.
Yeah.
He says, he says license and paint. And he's doing a great job. If that needs some, uh.
Discuss an act of approval for the alert, advance, law enforcement, rapid response, right? Travel, that's it.
Yes, this is a forty-hour training course that their department's taken for active shooter. It's a coordination with the fire departments in the M S. It teaches them how to come in and help protect lives and save people after when an attack is gone down. This grant is strictly a reimbursement grant. It is to reimburse for travel, um, lodging, and, um, meals and training. The training, they have actually picked out a determined thesis, and the training will be included. So, we will be seeking reimbursement for their travel, their lodging, and their meals. If they take any, uh, shares to part with vehicle, we'll need money. Have to apply for the knowledge card.
Make a motion to approve it. Second, all in place?
Aye.
And on that, though, do we have an update on Officer Mitchell that was in this rig? Does anybody know anything?
The last picture I saw, he was at Cacker Barrel or something eating.
We didn't do pretty good here. Didn't do it. Just, just one. Motion to adjourn.
Second, please. Yeah, get you with that.